Okay, now you can, sorry.
Yeah, that's what it was. We're good now. Yeah, go ahead. Take with Sharon should be here now.
You okay Sharon? Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to schedule a public hearing for January third, twenty twenty-three regarding the override of the United States property tax. Can I have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Right.
Alright, so that's. Alright Marcus, this one I'm gonna have you do a little explaining on. We're going to be returning the services of Dr. Philip Really.
Sure, um, we have one, we had, we were talking about one project we've been talking about for a while, a redevelopment, um, on Route nine A AMS came in with a proposal. Where, where for, I think a hundred forty-nine, uh, units apartment complex.
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight. I had one by mistake, a hundred forty-eight units. Um, so doing that, doing that. Review, as we were going through it, we realized we have to do a number of studies. One of them had to be a traffic engineering study. Um, plus it's off of Route nine A, so it's to protect the village's interest. Make sure the traffic is mitigated for residents as well as to meet all the requirements of DOT. Um, the, the best part about this is they, the applicant out of escrow paid for this, so there's no cost to the taxpayers to provide these services. The only thing I ask is, since the last meeting that we had the discussion, we got, just got another proposal. For vacant piece of property that's right across from my high school, uh, which they also came up with a proposal fifty-one units. That will also need a traffic engineer. So I'm recommending to the board to approve Phil really to just be the traffic engineer for the village. As more projects come on, we have a traffic engineer, we'll have to go through this whole process all over again. And again. All, all fees are paid by the applicant. There's no cost to the taxpayers to make that very clear. But at least it protects the village's interest, takes village comment, the board's comments and public comments. That not only that he takes into heed to go against the applicant, also we report that to the, to the DOT as well. So that's, that's the, um, my recommendation, hire Phil really as the village's traffic engineer for now. And of course, before we do any work, I'll report back to the board. If anything else comes along the way.
So when you say hire him, you hire him with the escrow money?
Correct, okay, correct.
So we're, we're just using him as our traffic consultant?
Correct, okay, correct.
And just to reiterate, you have used the services in past.
Yes, yes. Yeah.
Um, is the board okay with that of having him be our traffic engineer? Just wanna.
Yep, yes.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to retain the services of Dr. Philip Really, the E from Colliers Engineering and Design as the traffic engineer. Um, according to the proposal, um, that we have, that we have received the proposal packet. It depends who, it depends who is working on the project, what the rate will be. So I made that motion, Dan, second?
Yep, second.
On favor?
Alright.
Alright.
Uh, the next is a, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the coward carryover of ten and a half vacation days. For the village administrator, Marcus Saran.
Wait a second, let it.
Okay, on favor?
Alright.
Right, the next is a motion, and Marcus, I want you to speak to this because you, you did working on this. Um, what we're going to do is make a motion to authoritatively administer, administer the to obtain an appraisal and survey. Um, trustee Murray had, uh, brought up his desire to sell the property on the corner of Blakely and, uh, nine A. The vacant property there that the village had acquired, um, sometime down.
Sure, based on, um, his direction and the board's, uh, approval at that point. I reached out to, we hired, uh, Joel Apolos to be our real estate agent. Doing discussion with him, I hate to say this, but he was out sick with COVID as well for a while. Um, but he does rec- highly recommend that we have to get a survey done. In order to, to get surveyed on that, what we got, I think, an appraisal on a property, know what property we own to do the survey. Uh, to get the appraisal. Also very important, since it's village property. Um, to state law, we actually have to either go to public bid. Or if we get an appraisal, we know what the value of the property is, so that way we're actually again the best value for the property to protect the taxpayers' interest. So an appraisal will be done, but again appraisal is subject to a survey, so we know what the property is. So. I reached out to a couple of appraisers, I haven't received any proposals yet on that, I'm still working on that, but we did, they had a survey. Uh, it was highly recommended from Joel Apolos, the price, I think what I checked around, it's a very good price. I asked Peter to check on that as well. To do the, um, the surveys, twenty-nine, two thousand nine hundred seventy-five dollars. Um, they'll act. No, no, then to do the state, ten, ten stakes is another fifteen hundred dollars, fifteen seventy-five in these stakes. And then what I like to, to do a CAD drawing, which then we can give to our engineer, and we have a CAD of the information to them. For the CAD. It is, let's see, additional, uh, is a hundred ninety-five dollars to do the CAD. Uh, which is not bad either, so that would get put it, George maintains our zoning maps and everything, I would have that property. So. Again, it's a decision of the village board, they wanna go in this direction. And then Joe can take that information and market the information, market the property to see what we can get for and see if it could be sold. So that's what we are. It's a board decision, you wanna move forward or not, we have a point right now, we gotta either spend some money to get this. Property sold properly and see what kind of market we can get for it.
So as a comparison, I, I just did a survey, not, not a large piece of property, but just twenty-eight hundred dollars of the state, and so.
It's actually a high price.
Oh, it is, okay, okay.
Yeah, there's no, there's nothing, there's nothing on it. How many, how many acres is it total?
Uh, I think.
Twenty-eight, twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, yeah, I, I think it's a high price.
Oh, if you happen to ever recommend, I wouldn't have to hire these people, they're studying other recommendations. Okay, so we can hold off.
For, for twenty-eight hundred dollars, it should be state.
Yeah, okay.
It should be state, I mean fifteen hundred dollars, that could stake it.
Yeah.
It's a lot.
Oh, that's great, okay. Yeah?
You do.
Yeah.
Alright, well then maybe I have a better connection than you.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, mine was state, with the twenty-eight hundred.
Yeah.
I think twenty-four hundred, ten light states.
Twenty-nine seventy-five.
And Teresa said she had a stake for twenty-eight hundred.
Yeah.
That was a residential.
Surveyed and.
That's residential, yes, yes, commercial. Okay, it doesn't matter. If there's somebody else, absolutely, that, that's get some wonderful polls.
The survey that I work with, that's, it's pretty good.
Yeah, yeah, that's, hold off, that's good, that's why, that's why the discussion, so that's good. Well, hopefully, if the board's gonna hold off.
What was the name of the survey?
Here, I'll give you my copy. J R L. Yeah. Joel Apolos recommended him.
So we're going to the table.
Yep, we'll table it, there's no rush on this, that's fine. Alright, cool, thank you.
An appraisal, you know, pull from the appraisal anyway.
Yeah, and we're gonna get a couple of appraisers, and I'll let you know what that is too, yep.
I'm, I'm not, I'm really not sure what, you know, that property is, it's, it's hilly, it's rock, it's less than an acre, and Cindy, we, I don't know if you guys remember. Cindy will remember, years ago, we, that property was up for sale. And then, and we used to have a big sign, it was a sign there that sat there for, like, forever. That was, I think they were asking at the time, two eighty-five? If I remember it. Yeah, I just, yeah, this goes back, this goes way back.
You might remember, I remember, so we're talking to Nick about this, and when we were talking about another project. They were talking about putting a couple, like, couple of units of housing there at one time, so I don't know how many housing units we were talking about that point.
Up at the top.
So it might be usable, so we'll see what happens.
If the board wants to go forward with it, you know.
I think that's, that's what it will make it more valuable anyway, anymore, you can hear the, the walk of the property.
On the weekend, I'll tell you.
So, with us this evening, is our village engineer. George Palmer, and George Palmer has been with us how many years now, George?
Over thirty.
Oh. And he looks like he's thirty years older. So, and, and George is clearly our expert on our sewer treatment plans and seeing a lot of things over the years. So I've asked George to come in tonight, just, just, um. There's a proposal, um, for the town to tie in to the village to be found into a treatment plant. We've been, um, having negotiations, and, um. The original negotiation was for the Montrose area. Um, so there's a potential that there'll be another connection. And I don't know if I can say exactly Stephanie, her potential connection would be, but it would be, um, for the, uh, quarry property. So I've asked George to come in, so if the board members have any questions, and, um, and for George to just basically give an overview of. The engineering of that project, what it would look like. So, um, so for the quarry project, if the village agreed to tie in with the town. What would, what would that look like? Because I'm understanding the quarry is at a lower elevation, so. What, what would have to happen, what kind of line would have to come out of there to come into the village, whether you connect, and what that whole process is there?
Sure. We've been here for a while, we just knew, we, we were pretty familiar with the sewage collection system. And, uh, that area. And there's a number of manholes that can lead up from, uh, weekly avenue pump station. Uh, down Main Avenue upward, where you can top of the, uh, the hill by energy, the front entrance there. And essentially, something down at the quarry, you need, it would need a pump station, and it is at a lower elevation, and they got the. Put in a pump station in a forest main through that manhole, and, uh, connect to our system. And from there, it would keep bumping, uh, bumping to the gravity main, down the gravity main to where we play ends, and then to what's. From what I understand, I mean, I don't know the particulars or the exact location of the quarry, I know it's down by the, the large.
I can give you the exact location.
I mean, I mean, the exact location of where they would be putting a pump station in relative to their development, but. I mean, you know, putting it in that location, obviously, it's more like you had mentioned, and, and that's the point that they would have to connect. Um, and what's also connected there right now is the, um, energy pump station, that you have their own pump station on their site. Uh, that they pump into, uh, the manholes, uh, one of, one of the manholes down on, uh, at the entrance. And then actually they have a newer building, the, I forget what they call it, the office building, that has a gravity main. That, uh, leads right to the, or just right to the intersection of weekly and Broadway. So they have actually two, two points of, of connection to the system.
I think it's, it's not the training building, you drop it down the G S D.
Yeah, yeah, the large, we have building.
So the energy pumping station, where is that located? And it's their pumping station?
It's their pumping station, and it's located, um. Uh, I'd say on the south side of the property, closer to, um, the large property.
So like near the unit three, maybe entrance?
All the way down, all the way almost next to the, uh, to the river.
So George, do we, do we maintain that pump station?
We do not.
We do not.
And that was.
So how do we know what the, what, what's going on there, then? Like, that's one of the problems with putting a pump station in. Is that we don't, we would need the town to give us the authority to do the maintenance on that pump station. But we don't have ma- we don't have the authority in energy.
That is correct, and, and the reason, uh, we don't have authority, and it's been negotiated, that was negotiated. When energy was installed is, is three reasons, and they actually used to have a. Uh, sewage treatment plant down there, they abandoned that sewage treatment plant at some point in time, and it was negotiating with the village, put in a pump station. And pump it to our system.
And when was that done?
That, I would say, we've done in the seventies. So it's, it's.
So we've never seen that pump station?
Well, no, we've been down there, we've seen it. So energy gives us permission, or well, gave us permission over the years when we were down there, when issues came up and something came up, we'd say, okay, we wanna see. You know, what's happening down there, what's going on, because we hold, the, the village holds the BEC permit. And they're responsible for everything that comes into the system, so we. We do have a responsibility, and that's the way we get access to it, to, to look at it, inspect it, and talk to them about it. We ask them about maintenance, and they say, well, we take care of it, and that's, that's the extent of our involvement with their maintenance, and they're, they're careful themselves. But if we were getting a new pump station, and this, you know, that's a secure situation, that's, um, they have a lot of, um. Protections, so energy has, so if radiation came down into the sewer main. They actually have a detection system, well, with the first thing to a ten thousand gallon tank, it would sit there until it's tested and. And whatnot, we've got to be pumped into the system. So they have a, a, a more sophisticated system for detection, and we don't. We, we, we're never made a part of that since I've been here.
Oh, we shouldn't be.
Yeah, we shouldn't be, and, and we just wanna know that it's running, and that it was operational, and, I mean, that was the reason that was named. Like, us, and anytime anyone here, so. Um, but a new system, a new pump station, uh, it's, it's typical that somebody would build it. Like, it's out of this, and someone would build it and dedicate it to the village, you know, schools, but, but the reason of, it's a permit, it's a. We hold the permit, we're responsible, uh, we wanna make sure it's maintained. I mean, that's, that's typical, but that's not something you have to do, you can say, you know.
Well, let's back up a little bit. So the Montrose corridor, right? So obviously, there's hills in Montrose, so the force main coming out of the train station area. Who would be, would that be dedicated to us as well?
So.
Is that in the I M A?
No, that's not the I M A. Yeah, that one. Yeah, this, that came at a later stage, um.
Well, it's the same circumstances, as the quarry and the train station, same circumstance. Cause you're gonna push it to a force, you're gonna push it to a gravity fed main.
Right, that's right, so, um, we, when the, um, the train station came up. Later on, we were talking.
Well, this has morphed into five different things at this point, so yes.
Yeah, so we.
But it's all basically the same stuff. It's basically all, five different things maybe, but it's all basically the same thing. It's still twenty-five percent, hundred thousand gallons, force main, uh, pump stations. It's all the same thing, continue.
Yes, and now.
So if, if we, uh, the development at the train station, we don't know if that's on a private property, so. A lot, a lot of times a private property owner, like, if you're at the bottom of the hill, a private property owner would, oh, we don't have a pump station, cause they, then they were responsible for it, they take care of it. Residential, even residential, uh, area, we have these E one pumps, which I'm sure you heard of, so these E one pumps, and someone's saying, you know, you don't want to. This guy doesn't wanna go in there and take care of it, and they don't wanna be part of that, they have to, if something happens, it's on the property, I mean. That's typical of, of, of that kind of system. So when you talk about the train station, I'm not sure what kind of volume we're talking about. Not sure what, what, how much flows are coming in, but.
George, we're not really sure of either project.
Right.
Flows.
But the I M A that the town currently has on the desk assigned includes the train station, uh, area. Right.
The one that we all went to sign, yeah, that's the right one.
So that one has the, that has the transition, so that one's downhill, that will require a pump station, but that's not the maintenance of that, the care of that, that's not. Covered in, in the latest.
No, I know, but so figure this, George, you know it's gonna be a force main, they're not gonna be the only connection on that main, so it's gonna have to be their duty to. Occupy the, the pump station, it's not gonna be a private pump station. It's gonna be off to the force main, then from the force main up, it's not gonna be private.
So part of it is where it's located, too, if it's, if it's, so energy is another situation, that's the situation where it's all the way down by the river. So I can speak to that one, cause I understand that one. That one's all the way down by the sea, the village would actually need an easement all the way from through the property, all the way down to the river to take care of it. In Montrose, and again, we're talking to train station, I'm not sure if the pump station's gonna be located on the road. Where we could potentially take it over, or it's gonna be located somewhere inside of the site. Where we would now need an easement to get to that pump station and take care of it. In which case, what, what I said before is typical, so if, if we say, okay, that's your pump station, you own it, you take care of it, we don't wanna have any part of it. Then you don't need that easement into the property, then they take care of it, and they, they demonstrate to you that. Um, they, uh, have all the safeguards in place to make sure that they don't have any spills overflowing, things like that. I mean, there's two, two routes here that you can take, both of them have been used in, in other municipalities in the past, it's whatever you.
And they both work.
And they both work, and they both have their, their pluses, and they both have their minuses.
Yeah, I asked a question.
The downside of, of, of not, what I mentioned, the downside of not having control of it. Is if something goes wrong, you know, the judge is potentially responsible. Being in control of it, you got, you get to take care of it, maintain it, put capital.
But in the I M A, aren't we protected from that?
Before we get there, I wanna, I wanna make sure, if it's a private pumps, if it's a private pump station, you're saying the village is still responsible for it?
It, it, it all depends when we go to the E and C, how they want us to treat it, so it. And they might say, okay, you might, so when this all goes to the, the Department of Health and E C, they say, okay. If this is the way you're gonna set it up, you need this, this legal way, which is placed, or you need this signed off by the property, and you're gonna need some type of. Legal document, either to make you not responsible, or to make them respond.
Yeah, but, but I, I'm just saying, to the board, it will be better for the, I think for the village, not to be responsible for it, so if God forbid something happens or backfills the other people's property. We're village doesn't fall liable for any lawsuits, if the town.
The same with, with energy right now.
Correct, so.
Yeah, but energy, but it is private, so that thing backfills.
Same thing.
We're not responsible, they're responsible.
Well.
Well, you're talking about the whole this not response.
Correct.
I get that, and I agree with that a hundred percent.
Yeah.
I agree with that, I agree that we shouldn't be held responsible, but this force main is gonna be out in the street. And this force main is gonna have to be pushed by something other than what's coming out of that, that private area.
So, um.
Because there's gonna be more than one hookup in that area.
So I'm not.
I'm not sure either, but I'm just saying is that, that development could, for, to get to the top of the hill, there's gonna be more than one hookup. And that's where you're gonna have a force main that's gonna be owned by the town of Portland.
So if, if this. Let's say this pump station is closer to the river. Um, and it's down by the quarry. I would say there'd be a collection system to get to that pump station, to pump it up, to, to, to be, you know. If, if more than one person's gonna be connected to it, not gonna be dedicated to one property. Then there'll need to be a gravity line to this pump station by other people. To, you know, into a tank, you pump that of a tank and go to our plan, it's just like. So, uh, we, we don't, but we don't, again, we don't know, we're kind of. It's, it's a hard thing to do, we're speculating on, on what we don't know, and it's a property speculation, and, uh, we're trying to set up the.
But the variables in Montrose are the same as they would be in Brooklyn. You don't know.
It's a different system.
It's the same system.
Well.
It's the same exact system, it's going through the same street. Yes, it is.
Not be allowed and now to go to the energy pumping station.
They don't wanna go with the engine.
Now it goes.
What does that have anything to do with the energy pumping station?
Now.
You came over top of me when I was talking.
Well, I apologize then if I did, so, but I, I don't know, why are we so, this is the holidays, guys, come on, lighten up.
Because I was attacked, I was attacked by an email by somebody that I am not happy about. Somebody questioned my integrity, questioned my work ethic, and questioned my professionalism.
So what we will do, at, I, this is why I'm having him exactly.
And I will not be questioned.
Oh, okay.
I did my due diligence to make sure that this was done right, and somebody questioned my work ethic, again, I can't talk.
I have a comment to make also, and then we will, we will have that discussion. Can I? This is a very hot topic.
It shouldn't be.
Talking, no, it shouldn't be, but talking to a lot of the residents, they don't want this to happen, so I sincerely.
Because they got wrong information.
From who, the engineer?
I could only guess one person.
Engineer or attorney?
I talked to the engineer, and I spoke to our attorney, and you don't have to argue, I know who's wrong, and I know who's right.
So anyhow, um, there are residents who are not in agreement with us having. Um, the town come into our sewer treatment plant, so I do strongly feel that there should be a public hearing, the public, since it's our largest asset, should come in to speak at some point.
Were these residents heard after the cooperative agreement was signed back in February this year?
No, but I, I think that was narrow.
Because the same terms of that agreement are what we're discussing now, it's a hundred thousand gallons cap. And it's the Montrose and other connections in the town of Portland.
And I think that was narrow, I, I think that was, um, something that should have been put out to the public, so I think we're.
So it was signed in February.
We're gonna write that one.
Board in error.
It was, so we're gonna write that one.
So the other option, I guess, is the photo bond and increase taxes to repurpose a wastewater treatment plant.
I think it's the taxpayers.
We should bring it to the public then.
I, I absolutely agree, so we agree on that, which I think is a great thing, so.
If you didn't wanna do that two months ago, when we walked into town board, and we were ready to sign it.
Because I'm a little.
Now it's a difference.
About adding on the property in Brooklyn, because it's not what, instead of my willingness, because it is different. And it's not, it's going to be, we might have a potential problem with our pumping station over on, on Blakely Avenue. So if that has to be upgraded, remember, we have in the agreement with the state, which was done by gunpoint. Um, we have an agreement that the Albany Post Road money, there is five hundred fifty thousand dollars that will be, um. For a bond, not a bond, for a, uh, money we can get through grants. So there's a lot of unknowns, that's all I'm saying, there's a lot of unknowns, and then whom everything is decided, so. You know what, I'm only one vote here, so if the board feels that this is the best thing to do for the village, then that's what it is. But I'm, we're not sure, George and I have had a discussion about, is there a potential that that plant on, on Blakely Avenue needs to be upgraded in the next hour?
Is there? Is that true, George?
Well, weekly avenue to work.
This is the first I'm hearing of.
I've never heard.
So, uh, otherwise.
That's why I invited George tonight.
Well, I don't know why this is the first time we're hearing about this, the three of us, Dan, you hear about it?
I just mentioned this, well, there's a lot of things that have gone on with this, this discussion of a month, nine months, and it's really morphed into many different things over this time, so. You know what, guys?
It's still a hundred thousand gallons cap.
You can do what you need to do, though.
The terms are still the same, it's still a hundred thousand gallons cap, twenty-five percent of the additional capacity connected to Montrose. And other connections in Portland, that's what the cooperative agreement was signed by the previous board in February.
It's agreed on, yes, it is agreed, that did happen. So, but you know what, you just wanna make sure that we're doing the right thing, this is our largest asset. I understand what you're saying, but this was another ask, as, as we're going down the road, we almost had an agreement signed.
It's, it's an asset that's in need of repair.
Absolutely, I'm in agreement, that's why I wanted to get that money from the state, from energy's money. That was the goal.
And what's there in that?
And part of that agreement is to have to enter into an I M A.
Correct, that is correct.
Okay.
I'm just, I, I'm comfortable with the Montrose corridor, I'm uncomfortable with adding on the quarry, because there's a lot of unknowns there.
But everything that George. Everything that George explained to us was that it's the same situation as it is in Montrose, you didn't tell us anything that was any different in Brooklyn than it is in Montrose.
Well, now this is coming out about our pump station, who's gonna be responsible to do an upgrade on a pump station if necessary. But Albany Post Road is five hundred fifty thousand dollars. So if that needs to be upgraded, because that wasn't built, or I don't know how many more gallons. So like I said, you know, I, I just want, I just wanna put this out here, and, uh, you know, it's up to, it's up to the board, I'm one member on the board, so it's up to the board what they wanna do in the end. But I did want George to come in tonight to, to just go over some things and give some information.
So I have a couple of questions for George. So the pump station that you're talking about, that would come out of the quarry, is it any different from the pump station that would come out of the Montrose corridor?
It, it would be a. I don't know the flows for each one, but in 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 concept, it would be the same, yes.
Correct, so they would go force main to a gravity fed main. So they would both, both of them, when they deport of entrance into our sewage treatment plant would be that main pump station that mayor is, our mayor is referring to. That needs an upgrade.
Uh, so in Montrose, it go, it would go to a gravity main and that gravity main goes right into.
So it over, it it goes over the pump station, doesn't connect to the pump station, right?
It's by gravity all the way into.
The plant.
Into the plant.
Okay, so we would have to connect from the quarry to a pump station.
Uh, it goes the quarry to a gravity main and the gravity main leads to a pump station, which.
An existing pump station. And we have any problems with that pump station?
We had a problem once. Entergy was doing some work on their pump station, they put in a temporary pump. And um they overflowed our system accidentally, we we had it, we had it overflow. We explained to, we reported to the D E C, we told them, construction was going on, they were upgrading their, well, they were doing repairs to their pump station. They overflowed it, it's not a uh ongoing issue, it was a one time, you know, uh, construction issue. So that was the only time we um had an issue with it. Uh, and it was resolved right after that, the contractor stopped uh doing what he was doing, he restricted the flow. And it was working, you know, it was working fine after that, and that was a temporary pump for for doing a repair. And then put the this pump that he had, that we we uh, that was approved back in the in the pump, in the pump station.
So do you believe in this I M A, there is enough money, the way that the state bought it for us to hand out the money? Do you believe that there's enough money to upgrade our pump station?
So. The energy money was seven million dollars, seven, seven million. And they had a strategy of using that seven million dollars to leverage grants. But potentially, let's say double it, if if they gave us the grants and if it came through, so you potentially have. Fourteen million dollars if if it was leveraged properly, if you met all the grant requirements and whatnot, you could potentially get more money. So, uh, fourteen million dollars, um, and. And part of that, there's there's matching parts to those grants, they're not all one hundred percent grants, they're. Most of them, I think the best one is seventy five percent, so you have to, million dollars, you still have to put up to fifty. So grants are not a hundred percent, so.
But then that would come out of their, their thought was that would come out of the seven million dollars that.
That would be the match, would be from the seven million, um, but if there's any kind of shortfall. Parties would have to put up the money.
So the bottom line here, George, I'm just going to ask you one more question. Do you think the village should do this? Do you think that we should connect and 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 use the seven million dollars to upgrade our sewage treatment plant?
So. Would I, would I do that? Um, seven million dollars is a lot of money. Um, but. Knowing where we're at with the condition of the plant. Knowing where we're at with the condition of the plant, the the, there are, the the thing is that the flows and the cons, we we spent a lot of time. Back up a little bit to talk about how we got where we are and and the time that we.
Take your time, George.
Thank you. So we uh, we worked on the uh, international agreement. To protect the village, to put every caveat you can think of. To say, okay, what happens to work through every scenario, or let's say, you know, we had this scenario, what's our exposure? And that's how we, we looked at the I M A, so we said, okay, if we have to go to court, where are we going to court, how, what's going to happen? We we tried to run through all those scenarios and build in all those protections into here. So, um, with that, I think we had an agreement that we did the best we could, and we, we have a reopener in there.
But but let me just jump in for a minute, we did all of that. Twenty of twenty five percent has been crossed out every time by the town, so the reopeners gone, there's a number of things, so we can work all we want on all of this.
So so that.
But they don't agree to to a lot of the protections we put in there.
So.
And that's a point that's not ever. But forward.
So the current, the current agreement, what did they disagree with?
The reopener, oh, a bunch of stuff.
But they haven't reviewed the current agreement.
I'm talking about the one you just sent them. The one that we walked into sign.
Yes, so what happened, so what happened was, this has been going back and forth forever, so I made those changes. And then the town sent them back all crossed out again. And then I sent them back and put them back in, and it's been acquired. That's where we're at, continues to take the same things out every single time. Yeah, oh yeah, the reopener, there's a bunch of.
No, this, the one you just said.
When's the last time we received a the redlined version?
He's got the last, uh, I probably sent it to him a month, well, whenever you guys asked me to, three or four months ago.
Have we had any comments back on that?
No, not even to receive, thank you.
Okay.
Nothing.
So nothing's been changed from the agreement that we want.
But it hasn't been finalized or agreed to by them either.
Right.
Well, you guys both agreed that we would go into that meeting, you knew we were going into that meeting, and you both agreed that we were going into the meeting. And sent us into that meeting with that agreement, and you were both okay with it.
As we wrote it, yes.
Thing that changed was the ask to include one parcel, one, one connection to the Verplank. Keeping the cap the same, a hundred thousand gallons, even the twenty five percent capacity. That's the only thing that changed in that meeting.
The flow never changed, the flow numbers never changed.
Is the same Verplank as it is in Montrose.
Is that true? Because we need to talk.
So, let's, let's again back up a second, so the. Like, so we went to about three or four or five months, maybe four months. And we were just talking about the grabbing section.
Yes.
And then in the eleventh hour, one of the meetings, all of a sudden, we heard. Of course, total traffic, what is it, they added the train station. So that was kind of added. During one of the the meetings, I I wasn't at it, but they added it, it's fine, we said, it's a pump station, it's fine, you can add it. But that's, that's not really. Covered in here, uh, we didn't put in, you know, pump station at the at at train station where we put, we said. If I had notes, the I still would be, uh, this revision that I had was added, I think in um, October. So we went through from July to October, before even the train station was talked about, so. That's when it kind of got added in, it was, it was late in the, in the, in the process.
It was late, but that's the one that they have.
And that's fine, and then. If we have a wheel, so so whether I'm starting out conversation, we keep our reopenery there, we can discuss these things when it comes time. Because we also had in there, we have to make a submission for the health department, what comes out of that? We have to, what comes out of the E E C, uh, if they say you need an agreement with the property owner. We have to abide by that, so there were these protections, so you say, we gave you something that you could sign. Yeah, we 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 had, we had those protections in there, but if. If they're being crossed out, you know, they're going back and forth and taking them away. That, you know, that could be, that seems to me to be a problem, especially if we open.
I agree, but that's not the case in this situation. That's not the case right now.
Same protections would be in the agreement if we were to include the Verplank connection or.
Right, that's, that's the question, is there anything else uh that differentiates the quarry pump stations from the train station?
It was just that we, Blakely Avenue pump station may or may not, we don't know that, because we don't know the flow, so.
Okay.
If 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 they even tie in over there, if they even tie in, so if I, if I had a choice, I'd say, you know what, you know, town, you know, we're adding this in. We'd like to. To um, do some more changes to the language here to address that scenario, just just because it came up. I mean, they talked about it in the beginning, they said they want, then we had an iteration where it said. All right, this is getting too confusing, let's just keep it Montrose. And then we were at that point for a good period of time, and and now that the Pete still came up. The uh, the Verplank came back, so, I mean. In my opinion, to answer your question, I'd go back to them and say, you know, we want, you want to put our language in here to make this good for both of us.
And I believe that's where we're at.
Right, so, I mean, I would add the bleakly pump station issue in here to this whole thing to.
That's great, that's no problem.
You know, if there is an upgrade uh to this station due to yours, just, and I, and I. I had this, this one that was in here too, it said, you know, if it's solely due to your, one of the sections. Uh, that was.
I'll put it in.
Yeah, it's solely to, to to uh. That they would pay for it, so.
The total, they would have to pay for everything, your expenses, everybody's expenses, the maintenance, uh, we would have to figure out how, like. So when you say dedicated pump station in 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 Verplank and the dedicated pump station, say, in the Montrose corridor. We need to have complete accessibility to those pump stations.
Yes.
That, is that in the agreement?
We should, but we, so it's not directly in there, so if it's, if, like I was saying, the health department. It, in my experience, is the health department saying, if you want to own that, you need an easement over that property, you gotta benefit. So it's not in here directly, it says we need an easement, because that scenario has to present itself, they have to say, okay.
Okay.
You're not.
No, I understand it.
You're in the, inside the site, so therefore you need, so.
And that kind of thing is covered.
Is covered because we say you need all help, it's all regulatory agency permits, so not, it's not directly in there, but it's indirectly in there.
Okay, so let's go back to the original question, George. With that caveat in there that you just presented to us. Would you do the agreement?
The pros outweigh the cons. So if all the protections are in place and we did the best that we could. And if the board wanted to go in that direction.
You're an engineer.
I'm an engineer.
As an engineering standpoint, do you think that it's a good agreement?
Um, yeah, we 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 put together the best agreement we could, I I mean, you know, we. I say I was here for thirty years, I I've seen some things here that I say to myself, you know, what could we have done to keep this from happening? I see, and I'm not going to name the wood building or or triple ride, but um, those, those, I'm not gonna. But I I've seen that that there's been issues there for twenty years. And and I say to myself all the time, what could we have done to never have this happen again, and why? It keeps coming back, attorneys spend money, they're going at once, they're asking, they go on and on and on and on. Is there anything like that, that the anger, year after year, I don't know. I don't know, but we, I can tell you where I started was, we put every protection, I mean, Stephanie and I have. For you, you have a hundred, almost a hundred years, not there, so.
Thank you.
Have a hundred years of 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 knowledge and experience. Yeah.
And that's why they would have to sign our agreement, that's that's got your blessing and and Stephanie's blessing.
And that's why the reopen is really critical, what George says, we can't anticipate everything, Dan.
Our language or no language, then I I'd say. If you potentially, I said a few minutes ago, fourteen million dollars, a lot of money. Um, it's hard to to say turn that down, really it is.
So our wastewater treatment plant right now is running perfect.
Our wastewater treatment. I got, I got the.
The last was great.
So you're, like your words to me, it's running at a sixty eight Chevelle, right? It's running pristine at a sixty eight Chevelle, but there's plenty of variables with a sixty eight Chevelle, we know that, right?
Yes.
So, we are got sixty nine Chevelle, we got it, so there's plenty of variables with a sixty nine Chevelle.
Yes.
Not to mention, we've got two upcoming projects of development.
Yes.
So we want to get into fifty years into the future, so how would we get fifty years into the future with the sixty nine Chevelle? We traded in for a two thousand twenty two Camaro.
Yeah, that's a nice car.
Right?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's a nice car.
But you're assuming for a moment that the town is going to be willing to sign what we wrote, and so far, they have nothing at all.
We, we understand that position.
Okay.
At least I do.
It seems to.
We're not questioning any of that, it's not, and we are well aware that they have been nothing but a problem for you specifically. And we are, I'm very appreciative for all the hard work that you have done, and George as well, and I think all of us are. But we've had a point now where enough is enough.
Great.
This has to be done, or we have to walk away, and it's time to make a decision.
But I don't want to leave all that money on the table, if 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 the pros outweigh the cons. Which I believe they do, if it's got our language, okay, and they're willing to work with us.
I personally am comfortable with what we wrote and sent you, or I never would have said signing. I'm uncomfortable because for seven months, every time I send it, it gets, and it really get, it doesn't just get. You know, edits here and there, it's like entire sections, there will be no reopen or they will not pay a dime, they will not do, not do, not do. So then when you guys go into a meeting and you're comfortable with, oh yes, let's do it. I don't even know what you're talking about, because we don't have an agreement that they've agreed with. You know what I'm saying? That's a problem.
Well, they have the current agreement.
They do.
And they have not responded, positive or negative.
No. Probably waiting on some sort of.
Well, that was right.
I mean, they've taken out, they don't even respond and say received. They're just ignoring it, so, which I find completely disrespectful, because I don't do that to their attorneys, but whatever.
So what we're fighting over is the Entergy money, that the Entergy money, that Entergy put up with the fifteen million. And the state in a great wisdom decides to just carve out seven million for this joint project. So that's what the fight of the money is over. It started with the announcement in two thousand seventeen with the merger agreement of the fifteen million dollars, and then the state. Decided the uh, seven million dollars, and they were very specific on how the Entergy, let me repeat, Entergy money was the district.
Unfortunately, it's no longer the Entergy money.
Well, yeah, well, it still came from there, certainly not tax their dollars. No, it isn't, once they let New York state, it's not their money, so it's up to the state to give me that money. Yeah, we're going to get screwed. Um, so anyhow, George, I really, I thank you, because I don't want decisions to be made without the full picture. So the Blakely Avenue situation was not part of that picture for the quarry area. So, you know, it's something you need to know before you make decisions, what what's coming down the road, or even try to figure that out. And you and Stephanie have really, really, I think, done your best looking into the future as much as you can.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
We tried, we we pooled our experience, we we we, we looked through every word of this agreement.
A hundred times.
A hundred times, and and uh, we thought about Marcus too, he was, you know. Lots in there, and all, all in the in the spirit of of protecting the village, so um, and nobody wanted to. Nobody wants to leave money on the table, it's a lot of money, really.
Yeah.
And we, we, we're at the, we, you, we're at your direction, you tell us what to do, and we, we give you our best effort, that's, that's basically what we do.
And I just, like from the beginning, I was comfortable with the Montrose hookup at first. And then, you know, leaving the option open to open up over at the forum, but. Lot of development, lot of development, so. Any other questions for George Palmer?
No expense to taxpayer, well. Most expensive taxpayer, I mean, instead of floating bonds to try and put a Band-Aid on something over there. That we're not sure how long it will hold up for.
Yeah, and the other half that we we should talk about is is the development of of the Entergy property, we don't, we don't know what's, what's going to happen there. That's, that's hard for anybody to predict, to know how how much is going to be developed, what's going to come out of there, I mean, there was potential for. Another at least four hundred thousand gallons of data coming there, which we, we don't know what we can do, or how we're going to address that in the future. So that's, that's a little bit out there too, but you get a new plant as as Mr. Pushes you into, you know, new, new, new products push into the future, that's the, that's the problem.
One more pro Peter, I believe, is Stephanie, you can help me with this, would be that if we were to walk away from this grant, say. Moving forward into the future, if the Entergy property was developed and we had to do expansion. Be easier to get more money to expand from from grant money, correct?
Well, you have to show.
Well, we showed the need, we showed the need, then then we would show the need, and then we'd be able to get more money.
Yes.
Yep.
I think that's a major pro.
I'm not sure how this stuff plays, but I'm not against getting the grant money. I was the one that fought with the state to get the grant money, I'm all for doing the sewer treatment plan over. Just uncomfortable adding in the quarry at this time. That's all I'm saying, so I I hope nobody misunderstood that. I think that money is great, it's a wonderful thing, I have been looking to upgrade the sewer treatment plant. We started working on this in two thousand ten. That plant we were going to float upon then, and it probably would have been paid for by now, a new plant. That plant we were gonna float upon then and it probably would have been paid for by now, a new plant with the new technology. So to me, getting this plant done is righting a wrongs that didn't happen in two thousand and ten. And that plan is our future. We're gonna develop here and we need a plant. Um, just to put it out there, Marcus, if you want to just go over, um, there was an alternate, which, you know, the bonding has been mentioned a couple of times. We were able to submit a grant last year. And we did, we did get the grant. It was for, I want to say, one point six million dollars.
Yeah.
And looking at alternate, an alternate way to do this other than doing a brand new one, just so all the facts are on the table. Another way would have been the one point six million dollar grant. And I think it was another million dollars. So what would happen then, that would, it wouldn't be a brand new plant, but it would be. Like a coating, a coating on the existing uh, infrastructure over there that would potentially last ten to fifteen years.
Correct.
Okay.
And 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 new technology.
And then you and the new uh, fine bubble fusion.
I think I think the only difference between the two proposals was all the guts gets replaced. It's just that it's a difference in the tax, correct?
Correct.
Cut with it.
And then. Uh, it doesn't include any, we're going for an expansion without uh, or increasing our permit without changing the size of it. But it doesn't include uh, any new tanks, uh, uh, additional new tanks. It doesn't include that either.
But you get upgraded capacity.
But yeah, we're 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 going for an upgraded capacity with the size.
With a bubble diffusion.
With a new technology.
Yeah.
Okay.
But as as we said, and then you know, the other, a new tank, so. The original tank was built in nineteen sixty. And here we are sixty years later. So this pushes you, the money pushes you sixty years into the future rather than. That's the, that's the.
Okay. Yes, and if you were on the board, so you would understand. Sure, stand up at the new podium.
Um, a a lot of. Good ideas and thoughts coming from all of you and I especially appreciate you. Pointing out, it's, it may not be a perfect situation, but less you, I mean, you know, you gotta go with what's. The overall, the best food and the money is very important. Uh, but I have a couple of questions. The uh, um, one is the hundred thousand gallon per day flow is what they would be allowed. The town?
So it's a hundred thousand gallons plus twenty percent of anything.
Twenty-five. New capacity.
I see. And that would encompass whatever they did from any direction, Burt Blank. There's some new development now proposed down by the train station. Is that what you were saying?
They're they're capped at a hundred thousand gallons.
Okay, so that's what, that's first question. Um, and the second question is, while this money, grant money would pay for renovation of the plant. What happens in the agreement? Because I know I saw the initial thing and I don't remember the detail if it was in there. Um, apologies for forgetting, but what happens once everything is done, renovated, improved. Going on for year after year, is is there some agreement that the town would be paying a percentage of the operate, maintenance and operation? In the same way that Entergy did for years, they paid um, a percentage of operation and maintenance based on the sewer flow. Would there be something similar um, going forward? Because. I mean, I think you talked about some residents being, not being happy with this, but I think that you guys. Um, I need to work out an agreement that works for the village and then it's an easy sell for the people when you can go and say. We don't have to lay out extra billion of dollars for bonding and and raise your taxes because we're getting this money. And we will be getting a percentage of the uh, maintenance paid for by the town.
Based on flow.
Is that, is that in there? So I think, I mean, there's obviously there's questions of liability and um, and engineering and a lot of different aspects, but. I think we got, this is a good idea is coming from everyone, so stop fighting, get it done.
Yeah, and it's all about protecting the village in the end.
Yeah. I think there's a way to do it. You know, I think you guys are on on track.
So. Thank you, George.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thank you, George. And Steph, thank you.
No, he came down for this.
Working on this. Um, so information from officers and departments, justice court uh, reports uh, October twenty twenty-two.
I'm sorry, to to George, to George's view, or I'm just like.
Unless you wanna stay.
Uh, you mentioned executive section before.
Uh, I don't, I don't think so. It's contractual and.
No, I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah, no, but thank you.
So and and if anyone has any questions, feel free.
Although you still haven't answered my question.
Well, I I think I.
Indirectly.
I I gave all the, you know, we work, you know.
I get it, George.
George, we have to, we'll have to, I think if the board wants to move forward, you and I should discuss the Blakely Avenue pump station. That's not in the current.
And and I'm not sure. Um, so.
So George, what I was getting at was, would be, would there be extra money? In the IMA for us to upgrade that pump station?
Um, so.
That's not in the, the only pump station was the old.
No, it's not in the IMA, it's not.
It's not, it's not, it's not a state agreement.
About.
No, it's not in the state. I know it's not a state agreement.
So what we said about grants is that could be a future plan.
Okay.
So, um.
Please keep in mind that those grants don't pay for engineering, they just pay for hardcore. So we have to make sure the town pays for you for any engineering. Regardless if the car he hooks up or not, it sounds like the plant, there's some, the pump station is gonna need to be maintenance, whether or not we have into it.
Yeah.
Not at, but not at this point, the 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 uh, Blakely, the Blakely Avenue pump station?
I'm sorry, you're saying that the the pump station.
Well, regardless if they hook into it or not, it sounds like it's gonna need future maintenance.
Um, well.
If you're questioning it now, why would, I mean, it's only gonna, it's only gonna get worse.
Well, it it's. So right now. It's, it does three hundred fifty gallons a minute. So that's, that's its best. So the pump station adds. Um. Entergy, let's say does two, there's, there's a hundred gallon per minute pump there, let's say. If if what Montrose proposes is over that hundred and fifty amount. Then we'd have to do it.
Okay, I get it.
And that's, that's.
But we don't know what they're doing, so we're. So my concern, planning for the future, if any engineering fees have to be paid, they should pay, pay for that. If not, they call it in in the state, in the state money. Want to make sure your services, one engineering services are covered.
So I'm not sure if the Entergy grants would match that.
That's correct.
They they have that, again, that's a future, doing a future discussion.
Correct, but it's not in that grant.
No.
Not in a document or and and grants don't pay for engineering, they pay for hardcore.
Right.
So that's why I gotta make sure.
It's gotta come out of the matching one.
Correct, or out of the town.
Or out of the.
Correct. Okay.
All right.
All right. Justice Court information, one amount was twenty-seven ninety-six, two thousand seven hundred ninety-six. The other was eleven hundred dollars. Police report for October twenty twenty-two.
You too, George.
Christmas. Moving summons is fifty-five, total calls a hundred and forty-two, parking sums is five. Speeding sixteen, disobeying traffic control eight, unlicensed operator eight. Uninspected motor vehicle and equipment slash other violations eighteen. So I'd just like to give a kind of. A view of what, you know, what things are going on with the police department. Yeah, um, so highway report, household garbage seventy-eight tons. Uh, bulk and dumpsters nineteen tons, leaves five point three two tons. This is our big time of the year for leaves. Metal one point six four tons, chicken thirty-nine yards, bee waste twelve PBs, seven monitors. You can an engine, we have with us this evening Chief Roush is here. I have all your reports too. You guys have been on the busy side. Um, EMS assist eight, automatic alarm eight, mutual aid given three. And Halloween, thank you. You guys always come out for Halloween to make sure the streets are safe. So thank you, Keith. Um, let's see prosecutors reports. There's uh, there's a lot there, so.
We just got, we just got it.
Yeah, I have it there, yeah. That's received. Uh, attorneys report, Stephanie, what do you have for us this evening, anything?
Okay, just to brief, just to brief update update on the licensing agreement we've been talking about forever. So just before five yesterday, uh, the attorney sent me a proposed license agreement. I I went through it a bit today. Um, we we need a few exhibits and um. And then I should be back to you, to the board after I go back forth with the attorney for a couple of times, uh, within a week or two. Cause I know that trustee Murray was asking for an update, so there it is. And then AMS, we, David and I are now in possession of a petition. Um. For, for their project. Um, and so Dave and I spoke yes, today and yesterday, I think as well. So we're working through, we have some suggestions. We were on a a call with their two attorneys. Um, you know, working our way through what they're asking for because that helps create submission. And so we have a couple of suggestions. We're gonna ask for a couple of changes before they bring it to you, but that should come, well. I think it should come relatively quickly depending on their their um, their response to our suggestions. But. And then IMA and John Doe for executive session, please.
Okay, thanks, Steph.
You're welcome.
And I'm sorry, I, I inadvertently left our wastewater plant even after all we spoke about. So their monthly report brought over twenty twenty-two treated wastewater, six uh, six million nine hundred eighty-two thousand gallons. Eight, eight thou, eighty thousand five hundred gallons. Okay, Marcus, what do you have for us?
Uh, a couple of quick updates. Um, again, update on the gas, on the gas replacement here. Uh, kind of said, put the tap in and put the valve in. The valve is now in the grass area. Um, I worked with George and our engineer to do a new scope of work for the contractor for the trenching, but when they started marking the lines. They found a whole bunch on the ground utilities.
That's for the conversion to.
To the gas, from oil to gas, yeah. So the line will come from the, from the, from the valve and the grass into the building. The problem is the way we thought it will be a straight run, but they started marking a whole bunch of. Interference along the way. There was markings all over the place. So now we did a new scope test. Start hand digging first before they use any equipment, make sure we protect the utilities. We got a tree we wanna protect, so. So we're working on that separately. We'll, so we're actually gonna do a scope of work. We got four contractors who aren't interested in it. So I'm gonna get that out to them, see if we get a response from that. Uh, we actually have a pre um, a pre bid walk with some contractors to replace the gas boiler. It's on our website, so anybody knows any contractors that do gas work, converting from oil to gas. It's on our website, the specifications are out there. We actually do a walkthrough tomorrow. It's not mandatory, just in case people wanna come. And we actually will open the bids on December nineteenth. Of opening the bids and then hopefully we'll come back to the board with what responses we get for that. So uh, we're working on that as we go forward. Um. What's the other thing I want to talk about? Um. Oh, as we discussed briefly, uh, now we have AMS. We also have another proposal that just came in this week. To look at some property of prostitution from the school, in case somebody's interested in it, but the plans are, we have the plans available at Village Hall. Uh, it's fifty-one units with a commercial site on the corner. So well, that just came in. We're working on that process as well. Let's let everybody know. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
I just wanted to ask you, the money to replace the um, the furnace or here at Village Hall. That I I know I had directed, we had the, I had negotiated with Entergy and had gotten an additional, I don't know, with the final negotiation.
On sixty-five thousand.
Okay, so is, so that money is either, is that left in the fund balance or was that put into a special?
That put into a capital project to cover the cost. Hopefully, and then hopefully with all this, looking at number, depending where the bid comes in. We might be below with our budget and then we can use that money for something else or sending or anything or anything afterwards.
Okay, and um, I'm sorry, go ahead. Um. Okay, so that that would work, you start in the spring, because how, I mean.
Only the boys will be in the spring. We have to wait for the, and we also got.
Do it down the winter, but that's gotta be.
In the spring, also, uh, we also.
We have there, if anybody's ever seen it.
And then we also have a contractor that actually, we're gonna um, fill the tank, we take the oil out, replace the tank, leave it in place. So that's a separate thing, we're working on that as well. So there's a whole bunch of different pieces, but everything's coming together.
Tank will just remain empty, it won't be filled in.
It'll be filled in with with the material that's approved to the DEC to, yeah. But it's just below the generator, so we don't wanna interfere with the generator.
Yeah, no, no.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly. Dan, you got a question?
Uh, no, just on that one piece that you mentioned about the fifty-one units, there's also one uh, commercial component to that as well.
Correct, it'll be at the corner, exactly, yeah.
It's not above or.
Oh, no, sort of right. Uh, no, that's. The one that we're talking about, special apartment. We'll talk about that as well.
Okay. Some development going on?
Correct, yes. And then uh, DOT is, the DOT is, oh, as a way of it, we're actually, the engine, traffic engineers are having a meeting on Friday. To talk about the engineering, with the DOT, we go on traffic engineering.
Okay.
That's required. So that, that's being done as well.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
All right, Steve, Dusty Laker, what do you have for us this evening?
Sure, I just would like to uh, to kind of first go back to our discussion with the water rate issue that we had. I know with the workshop, we received some of the graphs that Marcus had presented, but I'm still looking for the information. I wanna know exactly what the village spent and what the usage was in the gap, you know, for uh, for that period of time to determine what the actual rate is. That's the one thing we don't have. I know we're talking about the fund balance. That left me thinking that all we're doing is overcharging our residents and they're supporting what Entergy was supporting previously. So until we really see the actual information, it still leaves a a question in in my mind as to how that's uh. How that's happening.
Okay, uh, okay, but if you have a fun, if you have the fund balance, like I was saying, it was two, we had a fund balance. Two years ago of of fund balance increase of two hundred, the year before that's two hundred, and then this career is a hundred thousand. So that's, that's the, that's the actual profit that village made between expenses and revenues. So this year, when we actually finish this year's audit, it's probably fifty to a hundred thousand dollar fund down, so. Uh, we actually were in the black by fifty or a hundred thousand dollars. That's total revenue, expense, expenses from the entire fund.
Do we have the actual cost of the water that we purchased?
We can run your, we can run your report of all the expenses, absolutely. Yeah, okay, so you can just run the revenue expenses for how many years you want.
I'd like to see the actual invoice. I wanna see the actual rate that we were charged by my.
Okay, so, okay, so you want every single invoice from them, okay, okay.
Just, you know, a year worth, you know, whatever you have to bill.
Okay, all right, okay, okay. Yeah, okay.
Um. The accessory apartment discussion that we've had, um, trustee Murray brought that to our attention several months ago, talked about it. We had a meeting with the planning and the zoning boards, um, Cindy put together that document and uh, I've been working with Peter and Stephanie. Kind of clean that up, so we're, I think we're at the point now to um, bring it to the board and then make a decision if we wanna. Go that route or we're not making change to that.
Were we waiting for the planning or is the zoning board to get back to us?
No.
All right, then I misunderstood that. Okay, I thought they were gonna put other comments in. Nope. Okay.
Uh, the next thing I have is the website. Our current website uh, is very outdated. I was able to get a quote from Civic Plus, uh, Marcus can be familiar with them. They do a lot of websites in the the area. So I'd like to add that to our discussion for our next workshop. And uh, oh, signs. I know Mrs. Tangen was here a couple of months ago asking about some signage. Just wanted to get a update on where we are with that.
I have prices on two companies, um, so we can add that on. I don't think they should be installed now until the spring.
That's the village.
I'd like to add a third one too. On it was coming in over lens twelve years ago, there used to be a a sign, a smaller one, a smaller sign over there, welcome to the town.
And then I know David Smith provided information on the lack coverage uh, issue, so hopefully we can discuss.
He'll be in the next workshop.
Next, yeah, okay. And then uh, Marcus and I attended, you know, meeting with Craig regarding the PDA contract and we can discuss that further.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Dan, what do you have, Justin?
Um, just the uh. That the home on Bannon Avenue went to auction and sold, so that's good news. Hopefully somebody buys it, fixes it up and goes back on the tax wall. Um, reminder, there's no on-street uh, overnight parking in the winter months, so. Um. And I just wanted to say thank you to everyone that was involved in Christmas tree lighting. Late event, so everybody involved, thank you, kudos. Oh, it's tomorrow for all of you.
And we have uh, noon tomorrow, April Harbor Remembrance Ceremony, if anyone would like to come home. Justy Capicati, what do you have for us tonight?
Uh, a few things, um. I would like to thank everybody for coming out for tree lighting. That was great. It was a great event. Thank you Santa Claus. Santa Claus was great. Uh, and um, just to touch back on the IMA, I know this is a subject that we're trying to get away from. And hopefully this deal will get done soon. It's a good deal, I believe. And like I said.
And like I said in previous meeting, that I was questioned on. A project with the battery storage, about union facilities and and I gave you all, I'm obligated to the village to do what I believe is right. And I think all our opinions on this board should be applied to every situation. And I I feel like that's important for us to be cohesive and to move forward. And that's all I'm trying to do here, I'm not trying to argue, I'm trying to give my opinion and I feel like it should be. Applied to the situation, just like Dan, Steve, Sean, all of us, I don't wanna argue. Well.
You let me out.
And Mayor Nickerbacher as well.
I got my feelings just hurting me.
I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm not trying to argue with our mayor, I'm just trying to get this done, this is a situation that I believe is best for the village. I really do, I personally believe that getting a new wastewater treatment plant for our village is gonna move us into the future. You hear about all this development we're talking about, this development is our future, with the loss of Entergy's income. We need to subsidize and that's with building, and that's how we're gonna make up the difference. And in order to do it, our biggest asset, which is the wastewater treatment plant, needs to be upgraded. And I feel like as we, if this board can work together and come to an agreement, I think that's the, that's the, that's our path to the future. That asset we have, we are the only municipality, I believe, in in Westchester County that has their own facility, correct? Uh, Yorktown has their own facility, right?
Yeah, Yorktown, yeah.
But, you know, we we we, we should protect it, and I agree that we should protect it, but we should also utilize it. And and upgrade it and treat it like it's a baby that we need to take care of forever, and we need to make sure that we do that with this money. So I'm not gonna talk about it anymore until this agreement is done. I know Stephanie's worked really hard, Mayor Nickerbacher has worked hard, we've all worked hard and we're sick of talking about it. So I'm excited to finally get this done. And uh, that's it on the IMA, I don't have anything else to say, oh, another thing I have to say is. ATV's on the street. Okay, we need to, as parents, cause I'm one of five, we need to tell our kids that they are illegal. Okay, our police department is having trouble with the ATV's on the street, we need to keep them off the street. They are non-registered, they are illegal, um, God forbid something happens where somebody gets run over. You know, we just trying to keep this neighborhood safe, that's all, our police, you know, if 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 it's an underage uh, uh rider. There's not much we can do, we all know that, so let's, as parents, nip it in the butt, take care of it at home, tell them. To put it in a truck, bring it to the trails, I did it, we all did it, we were all kids one time. And just, just stay off the streets and be careful. Uh, other than that, uh, I'm done, I had no more, thank you, uh, well, I workshop it, right?
Uh, December twentieth, but.
Yeah, so I will say my Merry Christmas is at that point.
So, yes, the ATV, we had gotten um, an email from a resident and, you know, I I don't think. People or parents really understand how dangerous safety can be. Um, you're on a main road, usually they're lower than a car, people can't see you. And just think about this, it's for the safety of everybody, not only the driver, but especially for the child that's on that, that ATV. If somebody's backing out of a driveway, they can't see you. So we want everyone to stay healthy and safe here, so I I concur with with trusted Capicotti. I I think, you know, it it really starts with the parents, our police department. You know, um, has addressed the issue somewhat, but it's just seemed to be more and more, it's just getting bigger, the problem's getting bigger, so. Thank you for mentioning that, cause that's a hot topic here in the village.
Yeah, I didn't know, what's going today?
Yeah, um. That's right, yeah, yeah, so it's 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 a dangerous, it's just a dangerous situation, like I said, we don't wanna see anybody get hurt.
Then our police officer, there's only so much they can do, it's gotta start at home, the parents have to take, take control of the situation. Sorry.
No, that's fine, no. Um, Christmas tree lighting, thank you, I wanna thank everyone who is involved and made this happen and it was a great event. Much, much, many more children have the thing, which was great, they would, they loved it, they had a good time singing and I. I thanked everyone, but I I, I I don't know how I did it with the Santa on the truck, on the fire truck. And the firemen out in the roads and always being there for us, thank you to Buchanan Fire Department or everything that you guys did. You are a big part of our Christmas tree lighting. I think, I think, I think, oh, Marcus, that's what I had to ask you, I, just as you said, audit, it triggered my mind, we, we used to. I I had directed that the audit each year be finished before the end of the year. Because we were getting audits the middle of the following year, at one time, you know, not, um, because. We, um, I just need to know where the audit is, because I I always like to have that order before we go into the budget process, so we can kind of see where we are. Um, previous year.
Um, Cindy's working with them, they finished the field work there, back in the office there, I have a couple more questions going back with Cindy.
Okay, any, any questions from the audience, comments, questions, anything, no?
No hands raised.
No, okay. Alright, so, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss contractual and litigation.
Second.
On favor? Okay, thank you for coming, everyone.